All right, good evening and welcome to Chaska City Council Meeting for Monday, April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, we're at the Chaska Event Center. We'll call the meeting to order at five thirty-seven. Um, Nate, will you call it roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Hatfield?
Here.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Gra is currently absent. Mayor Winchell?
Here. Um, tonight, we're gonna go into a, um, closed session for the city administrator's annual review. I have under state statute, section thirteen D dash oh-five subdivision three A, the city council has the authority of conducting a closed session for the review of a, of any employee under our direct supervision. The only topic of the discussion in this closed session will be the performance review of city administrator Matt Matroski. The meeting will be taped and recorded and the recording kept for three years as required by Minnesota Open Meeting Law. As is required by state statute, a summary of the conclusions regarding the evaluation will be given at the next open session of the Chaska City Council Meeting. All right, at this point, would someone make a motion if we go into a closed session, please?
Someone?
Second?
Uh, so I have a motion by Councilmember Hubbard, second by Councilmember Wong, to go into a closed session. Discussion? Again, we're only in a discussion, Matt's, uh, performance review, that's it tonight. So, all right, uh, hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, most same sign. All right, motion carries and we'll go into a closed session at five thirty-eight.
All right, so we were, we were gonna, um, open the session back up from a closed session. We were in a closed session, uh, for our city administrator's annual review. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order at seven oh-nine, and again, this is a Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, April nineteenth, we're at the Chaska Event Center. Um, we're, um, and I have to read here a little bit before we, um, start. Welcome, everyone. You might notice the meeting looks a little different. Due to COVID nineteen pandemic, we are holding our meeting at the Chaska Event Center. Because the city council has declared a local emergency for the COVID nineteen pandemic, state statute allows us to hold our meetings, uh, with a Zoom capabilities. We want to make sure that, um, everyone can participate. If you have joined the meeting via Zoom, you will notice that you are muted. We have a moderator on the call who will unmute those who wish to speak during the public comment portions of the meeting. Public comments will be reserved for visitor presentation, public hearings, and special circumstances determined by the council, like when the Chaska high school basketball teams here, and they're all gonna talk tonight, by the way. Once we reach those parts of the agenda, I will ask if there are any public comments. If you wish to speak and have joined the meeting by computer or tablet, please click on participants on the bottom of your screen and then select raise your hand icon. If you wish to speak and have joined the meeting by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. Once your hand is raised, the moderator will announce your name and phone number and unmute your line. Please remember that public comment is provided at the discretion of the council and is meant to provide productive discourse on topics related to the city of Chaska. Speakers shall refrain from comment or behavior that is deemed disorderly, derogatory, obscene, indecent, or off-topic. Any person engaging in such speech or action may be muted and removed from the meeting. Thank you. All right, now, we will-
Mayor-
Here, real quick, you're gonna have to, uh, actually vote to open back up the meeting.
We do have to vote to open back up, okay. All right, uh, I would entertain a motion to, um, to open the session.
So, although, can I make a point? I think we may have not done, or yeah, never mind, so, mostly we opened the meeting.
Yeah, roll call will be reflected.
Yep.
And we've added John, by the way, so. Kevin, do you need this, too? Uh, so I have a motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield to reopen the session. Uh, again, that's at seven eleven now. Um, discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, most same sign. Motion carries. Now, we can go in and I, I don't need to reread all that, do I?
No.
Good. Please. Exactly. All right, will everyone please join me in a pledge, stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. This is a challenge to get this meeting started. This is the hardest meeting I've ever had to get started. So, all right, um, we will go ahead and move to item number five, adopting the agenda. Are there corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, entertain a motion. So moved. Motion by Councilmember Gra.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield, uh, to adopt the agenda. Discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, most same sign. Motion carries, moves us to visitor presentation. Um, tonight, we have Chaska Hawks girls basketball state championship team here tonight. So I don't know who wants to start from your group, uh, I'm gonna turn that over to you guys, and if you can step up to the table, uh, Mr. Summer, and, um, I'll turn it over to you.
Sounds good. Well, welcome, uh, thanks for having us, uh-
Take that off if it, it might be better to hear for everyone.
Well, good evening to city council and all those watching online. Um, I'm, uh, John Summer, I'm the assistant principal athletic director at Chaska High School and, um, appreciate you, uh, welcoming us here tonight. This is a, a pretty incredible event, I'm not gonna say a whole lot, um, but we're here tonight with our Chaska girls basketball team who, um, April ninth, the day I won't forget, won a state championship, first state championship in program history, so, so proud of these, uh, kids, so proud of these coaches. Um, a few things I just wanna share before I let our coaches and maybe some captains come up here, um, just how incredibly humbling it is being a part of this community, some things that happened to make this event, you know, obviously COVID created some challenges for all of us, uh, including us at the school and including our athletic programs, and so, as they went on this incredible ride and we all kinda sat to the side and enjoyed it, you know, I appreciate all the things that happened to make this, uh, be so memorable for them. You know, our state championship, uh, game included, uh, support from Chaska PD, Chaska Fire, um, making sure that, uh, we got some escorts out of town and things, and, and all those things are things that I know these kids will never forget, certainly I won't forget them, and so, um, although, you know, that, that ability to come together to community and make this memorable experience was really important, and so, so thank you and thank those departments and, and for all the support we get from the city of Chaska. So with that, I'm gonna invite probably the more important folks up here to, to maybe say a few things. Um, our head, our coach and our captains, come on up, and I'll let them introduce themselves.
Can I see that?
I think it should be on there, right? Kevin?
Oh yeah, put the note up there.
They can see it at home. Well, who's gonna start?
Start, and then I'll let these guys, cause it's all about the girls. Um, yeah, I'm Tara Sifert, the head coach, um, man, it's been a really fun ride for us, right, girls? Um, but I think the, the thing that was really neat to see is how well these girls represented our school, our community, um, and just the following we had from Chaska. It was amazing. Um, the send-off that we had was great from the police department, the fire department, um, but together was our kinda theme the entire year, and I think if you watched the girls play, you saw we were a very unselfish team, very driven team. Um, they took nothing for granted the whole season, and it was just a really enjoyable tournament run, and I cannot tell you how many phone calls, text messages, emails, um, from so many people in the community, and to see watch parties in Chaska, it was just, uh, an amazing experience, but I think the girls really took a lot of pride in just bringing us home to the city of Chaska, uh, not only our school, but I think it's a celebration for our community. So, thanks for having us tonight.
Absolutely.
One of you guys can talk.
All right, girls, you gotta remember, you gotta say your name.
Name and what else? Oh. Um, I'm-
And what, what, what year are you?
Senior, I'm Kelsey Williams, I'm a co-captain with these two. Um, I wanna start off by thanking the community, just because the support throughout the season has been crazy, um, and obviously the year hasn't gone exactly how we wanted it to, you know, we had a late start to our season and then that two-week pause that we had before sections, um, but we really stuck together, and so it's really rewarding to know that our hard work paid off, um, in the offseason and in the season, it, it paid off, but, um, it's just been really fun to play with these girls, you know, we're like family, we're really close, and so to know that we were able to go and compete, you know, at the highest level and win and come up on top was really crazy, but, um, it's just been a crazy year and I'm just really privileged to play for this program and with these girls.
So who, the T-shirt design that said together?
Um, the captains, yeah, but we kinda worked with Coach T.
Three captains, Sid?
They did, we kinda have a, a word every year that the girls want, is kind of a theme or, or what their, um, what they feel like needs to represent the team every year, and so they came up with together is what they wanted it to be, and it couldn't have been more fitting.
That was, this particular year, more than anything, I thought that that really said a lot, and I, watching it on, on the TV, they taught, they zeroed in on that, and I thought it really, really said a lot, so, I thought it was cool, so. All right, who's next?
Hey, um, I'm Kaylee Metz, I'm a senior. Um, I wanna say a big thanks to the community and everything, like reiterating everything they said with like the fire department and just everything, everyone coming together and supporting us, um, even though we didn't, we did have limited fans, like we knew people were out there and supported us throughout, um, so that was really awesome. I think a lot of us, like, uh, when we came back and we got like a little welcome back party on the football field after winning, it was great to see like all the community come together for that, and, um, that night I said this, I said that we play for the name on the front of our jersey, we've said that for however many years I've played in this program, we've said we play for Chaska, like, that's who we're going out there every single night to play for, and I'm so happy that in the end we can bring home a state championship to Chaska, so that was really important. Wanna reiterate what Kelsey said, like this is our family, like we're all sisters, and it's been an amazing journey for all of us, and I couldn't have wished, um, for a better way to end us, my senior year, too, so it was awesome.
So what did it feel like the Monday when you went back to school, walking around being the state champion? What did that feel like?
Uh, it was honestly, it was weird, and I got a lot of congratulations from a lot of people and a lot of the teachers that came up to me and was like, congrats, and I'm still like getting congrats from people walking around school today, so that's, it's been really cool to see people, um, just kinda come together during a time that it, it was hard, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Awesome. Well, thank you.
Okay, hi, I'm Mallory Hyer, I'm a junior, um, and I just wanted to say thank you guys for recognizing us tonight, um, and also a big shout out to the community, all the support the entire season has been incredible, and, um, yeah, we've worked so hard for this all season, um, and in the offseason, too, and it's just, it was just an amazing opportunity to be able to play in the state tournament and bring a state championship home to Chaska, so it was just such a great season, and I love all these girls and the coaches, and yeah.
You get the repeat.
Yes, and I, I'll be back next year, we'll be back next year, so.
Is that a guaranteed already?
We'll see, but we're gonna work-
Oh, no, no, both dicks is like-
You gotta, you gotta savor it for a little bit.
Yeah.
Exactly. Um, well, I, I don't know, I, I think it's just pretty awesome, though, what you guys, uh, were able to accomplish and, and, and get it all done, it's, it's, I mean, the things that you had to go through this year is just, it's, I mean, it's, I, I, you know, it, it's kinda one of those, you always wanna play in front of that full gym, and you would've had that opportunity this year to have that full gym, and you ended up, you couldn't play in front of anybody for a lot of games, and, um, but what did it feel like in that, in any of you can step in, with that last timeout, and I don't remember if you were down a point before, yeah, you, no, you were tied, that last timeout, what, what was going through your heads, you guys? One of you can summarize it, I don't care, I, but I, I, I mean, you, you're tied and what was it, twelve seconds left?
Yeah.
See, I was paying attention, a little bit.
Uh, yeah, no, there was about twelve seconds left, and there was a, um, timeout, we called timeout, and, um, we kinda went into the huddle and we were like, okay, like this is our last, like twelve seconds of the season, like we want, wanna make it count. We even said in a timeout before that, we have four minutes left of the year, like let's put in everything we can, and that was kinda like what was going through our minds, and we also, um, the play we called, Coach T, Andy had had us run it multiple times during practice, and we hadn't run it in the game yet, but we were ready to, like, we repped it so many times that I think we knew and we trusted each other with it, um, going out there after the timeout, and I think that really helped, is how much trust we have with each other on this team.
I mean, you had to feel good, cause I, I mean, I don't, I don't know enough about basketball, but just seeing how smooth it went, and every, it looked like just everything went as expect, cause it was like, yeah, you got this, boom, score, but-
Time, that was unbelievable.
Yeah, that's, um-
I think they made it look a little calmer than it was in the huddle.
I mean, just that-
It was a lot of, it was like, if we're being honest, it was a lot of panic, I mean, we had confidence that we'd run it before, but the intensity of that moment was very huge on a stage like Target Center, um, but I think, again, we go back to that word together, they pulled together when they needed to, um, they ran it to perfection, really, and we finished the basket, and so, the hardest part, I think, was we scored the basket, but we still have to stop them from scoring at the other end.
You scored too quick, almost.
Yeah, and so-
I think everybody in Chaska collectively held their breath, you know, after that.
Like you're so excited, but now you gotta calm down and defend and finish it, which they did, um, but that was like another challenge on top of executing the play. So, yeah, it was very impressive.
Or anyone else from the council, I've been kinda-
So what was your, so what was your, your thought when, you know, the other team took that last shot and just left her hand?
Was my thought or-
What was your thoughts? I'm just kinda curious, what were you thinking?
I was praying to God that it wouldn't go in, to be honest. Um, and not in a bad way, but just like, we've worked so hard, please, let's, please let us, you know, not go the other way, because they were kind of on a run, and they had played a great, great game, too, and they got it in their top players' hands, what they wanted to do, um, but you know, we had somebody on the ball on the shot, and we walked that, so, um, but yeah, it's nerve-wracking, but I think they came out and played really well defensively, and, I don't know, whatever you guys think came on the shot, went up.
Kinda same thing, I hope this doesn't go in, but, um, it was really exciting to see-
Step closer to that mic and-
It was really exciting to see the execution on our first play, and as Tara said in the last timeout, they called a timeout right after we scored, and we're like, hey, we need to defend, so we were all just focusing on defense on the last play, she did get the shot up, but, you know, when it didn't go in, it just made the moment more exciting, we're like, yay, we, we did it, we defended.
Yeah, I would say for me, when the shot went up, I was just thinking, I gotta go get the rebound, so I went up, I went up for the rebound, so I had-
She was up by the rim.
Yeah, it was like I was gonna dunk it, but I just wanted to get the rebound so we could end this, and, um, yeah, win the state championship, so, overall, it was an amazing feeling when the clock hit zero.
One other question, so what was, you know, knowing that the run-up to this was playing Hopkins, who seeded number one in the nation, right? What was, I mean, and that, I mean, you're playing the number one team in the nation to get to the finals.
Mm-hmm.
What was, what was bigger for you guys as a team? Do you feel that, because emotionally, this was obviously the end game, but, you know, there, there had to be some, you know, huge amount of relief and, oh shoot, we've gotta play this other team, too. Go along with that.
There's no final if you don't beat Hopkins first, right? So we were the whole year, one game at a time, that's the next target, and that was the game, and probably the biggest win we'll ever have in the history of our program, to upset a number one team in the country, and that was probably the biggest challenge, is getting back on track, you have one day to prepare for a completely different team for the state title, so again, kudos to the girls that they figured out a way to do that, and it was a totally different game from the semifinals to the final. So I don't know if I can measure which one's bigger, but if we don't win the title, it really takes away from the Hopkins win as well, so that's what we really pushed, that hey, we have to finish the job now, we upset the big team, and now we gotta bring home the title. Go ahead.
I was just gonna add onto that, the turnover was really fast, you know, we beat Hopkins, we're coming off a really good high because they, you know, all the pressure was on them, and we were the underdog going into the final, being in Hopkins place now, we have to come in, all the pressure is on us to win, everyone's expecting us to win, you know, we have all the hype right now, so just to kinda play to where people are placing us was really hard for us, but I think we did it, and so, yeah, I was really, I'm really proud of the team.
Also, the Hopkins game was Coach T's two-hundred-and-fiftieth win, so that was, it was amazing for that, too, I think we're all really proud of it for that.
Pretty memorable.
Yeah.
You said you, there was a lot on the girls preparing one day, but you gotta remember the coaching staff put the plan together, they executed it, so don't forget that you get a lot of credit for that as well, so.
The whole staff, right, Andy? Yeah, we spent a lot of time with game film and training the kids, there's a lot of other, um, things that went into it, a bigger court we played on, a totally different venue than what the girls were playing, and I think that was the one thing that kind of amazed me, watching them play at the Target Center against Hopkins, it was almost like a home game, if you watched them, and a lot of girls, when you step on the state tournament floor, it's, it's a little scary, you're shooting into nowhere land, um-
Sure.
And just the confidence they had in that venue was really fun to see. I think they were just that driven, that it didn't matter to them where they played.
I just had two comments to make. First of all, just thank you for representing Chaska, um, in sportsmanship and class, right? I mean, and the other big story was the good sportsmanship moment, after that, then, you know, everyone jumped on, and I just, you know, well-represented the city of Chaska and, and, and the, the school and the coaches and everything. Um, the other thing I always point to, and I said this with the state championship football team, too, is, is the legacy you create. Um, so I have a young family, every, a lot of people know that, I talk about them all the time, uh, my eight-year-old stayed up the whole time, a little late for him, I thought for sure he's gonna fall asleep, cause his head was on a pill, and I kept looking at everyone, so, but he stayed up for the whole thing, and then you look at the pictures of the fans, you look at the signs, those young girls, those young boys, and being that inspiration, cause that's how programs start, right? Cause now they look to you and say, we can be better than that, and you want that, right? So, it is a big win, and, and it's a, and it's something to be excited, but I also think I always look at that inspiration, that's how programs get built, because now you've inspired that next generation to say, I wanna live that, I wanna play at Target Center, I wanna cut down the net dump, and all that type of thing, and so, um, you know, I appreciate that, I thank you, you know, like I said, he, he was excited about it, little brother did not make it, six-year-old brother did not make it the whole game, um, but, uh, got to hear about it in the morning, so just appreciate you, class dignity, and, and, and great sportsmanship in representing Chaska and Chaska High School, so thank you.
I would add one thing, this group has been amazing with our youth kids, you know, we do youth turn, we do youth camps every summer, um, during COVID, they took it upon themselves to do some clinics with the kids outside on Caitley's forecourt, so they truly had a connection with a lot of these youth kids, Mallory has a little sister in fifth grade, that team was going crazy, you know, making signs for the girls, uh, and that has been so special, and we talk a lot about that, is you have lots of young girls watching you, young kids in general, that are aspiring, aspiring to do what you've done, and that's so important, you know, for these girls to keep leading and leading by example, and they certainly did.
I, I just wanna say congratulations, that's a lot of hard work, a lot of years, a lot of time, a lot of dedication, um, you guys all trust each other completely, you're all strong women, um, so my hat's off to you, that is not an easy goal to accomplish, but probably feels so good now that it's done, so congrats.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, congratulations, I don't, I mean, just echoing what everyone else said, um, just incredible, I was never much of a person, basketball person, but it was so exciting to kinda watch it come together, even though I didn't know what was hap, going on half the time, but, um, just, yeah, you guys are incredible, and the teamwork, I think that just says a lot about our community, and you guys really represented that well, so, good job.
And I didn't get a chance to offer my congratulations, but, um, I think this is a reflection upon the character of each of you as individuals, as well as a team, and I think it's, it bodes well for the future of our youth, as we kind of look towards, you know, you guys as the next generation of leaders, the next generation of members of our community, next generation of people who are pioneers and something, and to be the first is a big, big deal, cause it's always the hardest. Um, so certainly, I think you're setting a great example for those who come behind you and follow you, and I certainly think, and I hope that this is just the beginning for each of you as individuals, too.
Um, and, and I will say, I, you know, I, I think I'm in my twelfth year as mayor, and I, I get to do a lot of fun stuff, but two of the funnest things that I've ever got to do was congratulate the football team and all you guys for the state championship. These are the fun things, these are the things that, you know, it's, it's the community pride thing and everything like that, that, that you brought home, and to see the, the, the article that Eric wrote about how the community did, I remember one of the captains standing here saying, I, I asked him a question about what it felt like, kinda that same thing, you know, you got twelve seconds left, well, they were down to like a minute, and he said, I looked up into the crowd and saw everybody there, you guys didn't get to experience quite that, cause I think you would've had that opportunity, um, but he talked about seeing the, the sea of purple and all of the, all of Chaska standing there supporting them, really made him pull it through, and, and those are the things that, I mean, we as a council, we try to build that, but the only way we build it is through things like this, and, and a community of, of stuff like this, I, I mean, I, I think of, of your accomplishment, like you kinda touched on, you had a, you played through COVID, you had a stop, uh, you got, you didn't play in front of any, anybody, and all of the, wearing a mask, I would think would be the biggest pain that there ever was, and, and you should get a gold medal just for having to wear that in, in the first place, but the one thing that seems to get missed in all this is the fact that you went undefeated, that's as big a feat as anything. I mean, winning the state tournament is, you know, people do that, but very few people win it undefeated, so I think that that is such a mark that you hit there, uh, uh, I mean, obviously the state championship is, but, but the undefeated really just says who you guys are, cause you never, that means you never let up, there was nobody that was that, oh, we'll beat them, and then, you know, that's the one you get your butt kicked at, but, uh, that, I think that that's as much of a feat as anything, and, and the other part that still will always stick in my mind, and I, I'm not sure who it was, but when, I think it was one of you three went and hugged that player from Hopkins, I thought it was you.
Sir Rosemont.
Rosemont.
Yeah, for the finals.
Sorry, Rosemont, Rosemont. That, I mean, I'm surprised, I mean, they had the camera on, but they never really, I mean, to me, that's sportsmanship at its finest, uh, you know, there you were battling it on the floor for, for that whatever time, and then the game's over and you two, and you're not supposed to be doing that, you know, now you're doing it in front of the whole world, um, but that, to me, just really, uh, said a lot, I mean, that just said a lot of who you guys are, and, and the together that you had on your T-shirt really, really says it, so congratulations to all of you, you deserve it, enjoy every minute that you have of it, cause it's, you, it's well-deserved after what you went through, so, thank you, I greatly appreciate it, but before you leave, I'd like that if each one of the girls had an opportunity, we got one-point-two million viewers, you never know, there could be a hot date out there for you or something, but, but your coaching staff to come on up and just introduce yourself before you leave, so everyone has an opportunity to, cause you're all together.
Actually, after everybody introduces themselves, if you could go behind the council, we're gonna get a picture of everybody there.
So, um, so I don't know, John, have you wanna run, whoop, did you wanna say something?
Introduce ourselves? Sir, reintroduce ourselves?
No, you guys are good.
Okay, do we wanna go to the back?
Yeah, you guys should go in back, though.
You guys just come around the back right away. Don't be shy, just say what year at school you are. You know, I never got the state title, but I, we won a conference. Name and what year at school.
Um, I'm Lily Neever, and I'm a junior.
Okay.
Um, I'm Peyton Wertz, and I'm a junior as well.
Welcome.
I'm Zoe Cutler, and I'm also a junior.
A lot of juniors.
Lucy Dartis, and I'm a junior.
I'm Kennedy Sanders, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Ashley Schulke, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Jessica Hyer, and I'm a junior.
I'm Anna Lanza, and I'm a sophomore.
Uh, Andy Serge, assistant coach, really, really old.
Where's Ellen tonight?
She's still waiting, sophomore.
Um, we're also gonna mention the people that weren't able to be here tonight, uh, Kayla Hendrickson, she is a senior captain, um, Kendall Carmen, she is a junior, and Julia Whacker, um, she is also a junior.
Yeah.
Do you want me to put this up here?
Yeah, why don't you put that in the front? And if everybody can take a big step over this way?
Yeah, so kinda- Thomas, we don't bite over here.
Girls, can we just slide? Hey, girls, try to center right here on the front.
Please. Hi, Amy.
Just single file, single file.[1752.11] They're used to having a front row kneel.
I see a smile, the mask.
Here, why don't we, Kayla and John, why don't you guys come in a little bit? And everyone, all the council can come into a little bit.
Shouldn't everybody drop their mask?
Hey, here we go. One, two, three. All right, look at me real quick. I don't want Matt's image.
My camera's over there.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations. Good job. Thanks, John. Savior to that one.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. We've got to follow that.
Just have them stand there and don't breathe.
Yeah.
Hold your breath.
I will take a sec here. Can I, should I full of bomb in there? Thank you again. See you, John. Take care.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
All right, um, next, um, we have, um, last year's E O, emergency operation or E O C from our fire chief, Tim Weeby. Got a big act to follow there. No kidding. Guess you can take that off. Together. Hi. There you go. Thanks, man. Had a lot of people looking at you.
Your hair is sure sticking up in the back.
Should have worn your baseball cap.
You're anyway.
Before Tim gets going on this, I just want to take an opportunity to recognize what a role that Tim stepped into on March 9th of last year. So one of the duties that that Tim has as being our fire chief slash emergency preparatus manager is that you hope you never have to do the second part of your job. But occasionally you have to. And Tim got thrust right into that really quickly and did an absolutely fantastic job over the last year of helping to lead our E O C center and and really guide us through. So he's going to highlight some of the things that that I think are are fantastic that came out of this, but I think we'd be remiss not to recognize what a huge role that that Tim stepped into. He didn't ask for it. He just sort of got it. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll start off, uh, I believe I got to introduce myself. Tim Weeby, I'm the fire chief and the city emergency manager. I would just reply to Matt's comment and share with the council that this is clearly a team effort. And I'm going to kind of share some of the highlights of the team and the successes we've had. I don't think we brought you guys a state title, E O C team, but I think I'm going to share what we, I think we did for the community and our employees. So really, it started, um, I tried to look back when I was at the council meeting, I believe it was in April, when I came and talked to you about COVID and kind of what we started doing. But really, it was share with the council the mission and share with the council that the steps we're taking to keep our community safe by keeping our employees safe and keeping that continuity of service. So really, uh, highlighting our mission of just keeping our employees safe and healthy to have a continuity of service for our residents. And I think if we just entered the program right there, it'd be a success. There's so many things we went into that we did to do that. I would tell you, a lot of things were not fun and not popular. But I believe were things that were necessary to, again, keep that continuity of service. I don't like using the word essential versus non-essential. I would say some of our departments were critical. And maybe that's what I'll get into here in a few minutes and talk about that. So I just want to take a step back in time because July 29th of 2019, the department heads and the council, we attended a training at the fire station. If you can remember, it seems like many, many years ago. It really wasn't that long ago. We talked about what emergency preparedness was, what E O C was. Uh, we had, uh, you know, Richard and Rena there to help facilitate that. We talked about tornadoes, and we talked about flooding. We just talked about emergencies and what roles departments would play, what roles the council would play. Really not knowing what was in store for us. So okay, Kevin. So I took this slide out of the presentation I did that day, July 29th of 2019. And I really shared with you that my concerns really weren't as much about a tornado or a flood, even though that has an impact on communities. We've went through them. We've lived them for a number of years here, and we've been successful managing them. Again, what the things that really concerned me, I shared with you was ice storm or multiple days without power. That was one of my big concerns. And I think we saw what happened in the southern United States when you lose power for multiple days. The other thing that concerned me was not necessarily terrorist attack in the Chaska area, but just in general, how the impact of that was could have throughout the community. Active shooter. It's really sad that that's what we're talking about yet today. But that's always, I think, a concern I think we might all have in the back of our minds. And it's ironic, I put in our pandemic. And I don't believe we talked that much about pandemic back then. But I did put it in the slide presentation, you know, back in 2019. And boy, do I regret that. We we talked about how other departments within the city maybe would kind of shut down and help other departments. And you can kind of see how that happened during a pandemic with the community center, with other departments throughout the city, how we had to get creative and help each other out. Again, to keep that continuity of service. Talking about the town course, you know, I was envisioning town course and par 30 would shut down. But I put in our curling ranking community center, and that did come true with that staff. And Marshall's here, we'll talk about it, how the staff from these other departments helped out to keep this machine going. So some dates to remember. I think over the years, as you get older, you start remembering dates of what happens around this, uh, our state or this country or this world. But March, March 6th was the first COVID case in the Twin Cities metro area. I remember exactly where I was and I remember my phone ringing. And then March 9th was a Sunday. I was coming back from my cabin. My phone was ringing about what was coming. And again, we we've been talking about that. Matt and I talked about this leading up to our first E O C meeting about how this could have an impact. And March 9th of 2020 was our very first E O C official meeting we had at the fire station. So again, that evolved from a handful of people to a pretty robust group that was there to help, you know, protect the city of Chaska. Again, just to reiterate, you know, the emergency operations center was at the fire station. It was really interesting that how we brought the whole E O C team there. And then we, as COVID kind of evolved, we realized that having us all together wasn't a good idea. You know, we weren't into Zoom meetings yet. We didn't, you know, we didn't, I didn't even know what Zoom was at the beginning. So we kind of evolved our our meetings. We created redundancies. Again, not knowing, you know, fire people, we we planned for the worst case scenario. So we had redundancies three deep. So if I got sick, who was going to replace me? And if the C administrator got sick, and we went three deep with a lot of our key positions and had a flow chart that who could they call to step in and help out?
Only one they didn't worry about.
It's easy to get somebody who gives cheap, cheap comments all the time.
Anybody in there do that.
Yeah. So when we started meeting, we started meeting daily because there was so much to do from, uh, just from the operations side, from the really the human resource side, we become, become a huge, huge piece of the puzzle. We're meeting daily and weekends. Then we kind of changed it to three days a week. And towards, you know, the ladder, we're meeting one day a week and we're still meeting. The the Chaska E O C team is still meeting once a week. Our hope, you know, my hope is, uh, we've kind of set a date to be done, like in the middle of June. So hopefully that all happens. So but we've, we've had a number of meetings. A lot of time by a lot of people putting this all together. Here's this real quick snapshot of kind of the org chart. I want to be really careful not to single out people, but there is this, a lot of people did a lot of work. It's not no eight to four thirty job. This was early in the morning to late at night and weekends for a lot of people to kind of keep this, keep this thing going. And really for the public safety side of it, you know, P P was such a big deal. And, you know, a number of people stepped up and helped out with the P P that could keep us feeling comfortable. Again, put yourself in the shoes of a, the police officer, paid on call firefighter, you know, we're going to, we're sending you in to, uh, treat COVID positive patients. You know, how do we ensure that we're keeping them safe so they can go home to their families and not, you know, infect their families? So it was, it's a big, big deal to keep that safety piece involved. What did we really do? Again, I've kind of summarized some of this, but you know, again, with the H R on the administrative team, it it really evolved into administrative, H R, payroll, I T, you know, how do you work from home, Zoom meetings? How do you control access to buildings? And I know the council's been a part of all that. I'm just kind of summarizing for our audience how we shut down buildings at city hall, municipal services, fire, police, to really protect that continuity of service, not allowing the public to come in and keeping our, keeping our people healthy so we can go out and do our job. Lunches, you know, we had people taking lunches in vehicles to stay away from, you know, other groups, creating pods in a different group. So again, think about, we have our own electric utility. You know, we don't depend on Excel to kind of take care of it. It's our Chaska employees that are making sure our power stays on. Water and sewer, you might not think it's a big deal, but talk to the people down south when they had no water to function because everything was froze. So all them things that I hope the public really never saw, never really felt any issue. I know they felt probably issues with community center closed, with some of the sports stuff, wearing masks. But their their water probably worked, their electric worked. And if there was emergency, police or fire responded. We changed start times, you know, to split groups up. So one group would come in at six in the morning and another group would come in at seven or seven thirty, really keeping separated. And you know, think about that in your daily jobs. That's a challenge to get people to switch that up, you know? They're used to coming at a certain time. They're used to taking their kids to daycare at a certain time. It's, it's challenging to make them changes. And we've all sacrificed, right? Including our employees to change the way we've done business. Talk about some really, to me, what the huge positives that come out of here. You can talk about the continuity of service is a big positive, but birthday patrols. How, to me, a big of a deal, that that was a big, big deal for our community. And really, some dark times is how we went and made a big difference. And I've shared with the mayor and and Matt that I I was privileged to be part of some of them birthday patrols. And it's, it's pretty emotional. It's not about the person that's having the birthday. It's the whole neighborhood came out. And the whole neighborhood would come out and wave and stand in their driveways. And how it wasn't, it really was for the whole community. Uh, we, we did 328 birthday patrols. I'm telling you, we, we did for for the whole community. And that was really a special time, I think, when we were able to do that. So I think I'm going to make sure I'm, I'm turning over Marshall. Marshall and his team, again, really took things to the next level with Chaska Cares. And I'm just going to turn it over to him here quick to talk about a few things.
Good evening, mayor and council. Oh, and for your 1.2 million visitors, I'm, I'm Marshall Grange, the Parks and Recreation.
You're laughing about it. That's true.
Yes, and and thank you, Tim. That the birthday for all's patrols is really just a good transition into this Chaska cares. I mean, the the fire department and police department, you know, went way above and beyond to make birthdays a special day for all those kids. And, you know, I think there was even some adults that signed up for that. So that was pretty cool to see. But yeah, it, once the E O C got formed, you know, it was a little ways in where we felt like some of the internal organizational stuff was in a good place, some plans were in place. And from there, our attention started to turn to the community. And, um, you know, we anticipated that there's going to be challenges, you know, when people are forced to shelter in place and things of that nature, um, you know, and some of the mental health concerns that come with that. And so Matt Poteraski charged me with, you know, putting together something that could could help the community in that way. And so put together a team of staff, which I'm going to recognize here in a second. But we came together and and had some discussion about what that could look like. And really, our main focus was to figure out ways where we could partner with other people and organizations that were trying to do good things in the community. And really just be an additional resource to help them out in any way we could, to share what they, what it is that they were doing. You know, and then also kind of highlight that for the community. You know, I think it's important to celebrate the things we're doing and keep saying it's, it's building community spirit and sort of that, that sense of pride for residents who are living here in Chaska. And so that, well, those are really kind of the key things that we tried to focus on. And up there is just a list of the the variety of things we've done, done throughout the year. And it's just been, it's been really great coming together and and helping each other out during a difficult time. And so if you want to turn it to the next slide, Kevin, the Chaska cares team includes Aaron Link in Parks and Recreation, Joan Seedorf in Parks and Recreation, Sarah Anderson in Fire, Julie Jenke in Police, and Kevin Wright in Communications. And I think most of them are on Zoom in the background somewhere. So just really want to take this opportunity to thank each one of them. They are really the doers. You know, all those initiatives that we've done, they are really the staff that have, you know, planned, coordinated, and then we're on site making it happen. And so we met weekly for a while and we continue to meet biweekly. To continue to try to serve the community under, under kind of that, that goal that we set forth. And but I also want to take the opportunity to thank everybody here. Not only did, you know, is it the Chaska cares team, but it's taken a lot of people to carry out the things we've done. And so I know each one of you council members and mayor have helped out at a lot of the functions. Staff and all of the departments have come out and helped in a variety of ways. Obviously, all the different organizations in our community and then, and then our residents. So you know, we continue to, uh, to serve in that capacity. And, you know, and part of the, part of the, um, I think, goal going forward is to keep this going too. And even beyond the pandemic, I think there's ways that we can serve the community and celebrate kind of this notion of caring about our community. So just some of the impacts at a glance here, highlighting, you know, one of the big things that Chaska cares has done is, you know, helped out with these food distribution events. So you can see there, we've done 11 events and served over 25,000 people at those food distribution events. And just great partnerships with a variety of organizations to make that happen. From there, I'm going to turn it over to Tim.
So what's really, uh, what's changed for us here lately has been really vaccines and the role our E O C team's been playing in the vaccines from, uh, uh, first of all, kind of making sure our first responders.
I think your training's not happening anymore, Tim.
Maybe a little extra toot there, I think.
From really getting our first responders vaccinated, our police and firefighters, and then, uh, really working with our partners. Ridgeview's been outstanding work with Carver County Public Health to help, uh, do whatever we could as a E O C team to help facilitate and do whatever we could for our community in this surrounding area. Julie Jenke has been totally outstanding with some of the senior facilities, working with them to try to find creative ways to find, how can we get that? facilities, working with them to try to find creative ways to find, how can we get vaccines for our senior centers and areas like Ruru Tarashe played such a key role, uh, with the vaccine. So, uh, that, that continues, that work is still going on. But, uh, again, I, I feel really privileged to be working with this group that have really put a priority to how do we, not only we got our key staff vaccinated, how do we get our communities vaccinated or give them at least the opportunity, uh, to find an easy way to get vaccinated? And I, I was gonna give this to Matt, but I think some of the other things we did is, uh, internally, uh, keeping you connected. So Matt's, you know, as a city administrator would do that, uh, quarterly with all the departments, where we, we started doing that weekly. Really keeping our, uh, employees up to date, uh, what's going on, uh, keep them in the loop. And I know a number of council members have been part of that, keeping you connected is, uh, it takes a lot of time. Takes a lot of time, a lot of meetings and it's been a lot of Zoom meetings we've been a part of here in the last little over a year, uh, but really just keeping people up to speed, uh, answering questions, uh, and doing our best to really just keep the peace in the family, you know, and kind of keeping, keeping everything functioning here. Just a lot of things going on and I'm not sure if the council can see the EOC team, uh, who's on or not, but, uh, the EOC was gonna join in. I just want to take a quick opportunity before I turn it over. I believe we have a video and then I'd be happy to answer some questions. But, uh, the EOC team, um, I won't list all the names, but there, uh, most of them are, I think, on. And I just want to personally thank them that, uh, uh, all the work they've done. And, um, my job was easy. My job was just creating agenda in the morning and turn it over to them to do all the work. But, um, I won't call out everybody. I just want to say thank you to the EOC team, um, for all the extra work, extra hours, late nights and weekends to, uh, again, keeping the continuity of service for the city of Chaska. I believe Kevin's got a video for you, then I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm sure you'd want me to just get out of here so you can get, uh, some business done.
Who did the logo?
Marshall, you wanna give a, this explanation where the logo came from?
I've always wondered that. Where did the logo come from?
So, so the logo really was just, uh, basically, an online thing that I decided to color. And I liked the heart because it kind of resembles, you know, caring and love for the community. And I don't know, I just sent it over to Kevin, like, use it how you want. And Kevin was like, oh, this would be a perfect logo.
I just was curious.
You know, uh, Nate and I were talking about this the other day is, um, the whole year as an organization, we spent spread apart, just like everybody else did, you know, in the world. We, we spent spread apart, people working from home, zooming in, uh, people who had to work individually out in the field where they might be with a team. But I gotta tell you, out of the twenty years I've been here, I felt more connected with people in the organization uh, during this past twelve months than I probably have any other time, which is really a testament to how people came together and just, I mean, you know, you see it, I mean, I'm just looking at the faces of all you guys who are on the, the Zoom call now. And it's just heartwarming to think about all the things that happened during the course of this past year. And, you know, tough times, but also some pretty fun times. And, uh, just the things that really, uh, even though we were physically separated, really felt like, uh, really felt like we were together as a team. And, uh, you know, as, as bad as the last year was, you know, just globally, I, I, I just, I'm so proud of everything that happened, uh, over the, the last year. And, and it just could not have happened without this team of, of people that you see here tonight, uh, coming together and saying, hey, we, we can look at this, uh, negatively, or we could say, hey, maybe this is an opportunity to really shine. And I really felt like everybody just had sort of the attitude of, no, we want to be the community that people look at and say, we want to do what they're doing. And a number of times we talked about that, especially with, you know, when we, I think about like when we did the graduation parade, uh, we were the only community to do that. And I think we all sort of took pride in saying, no, this, this is something that could be even more special, uh, than, you know, than, you know, graduation's always special for the seniors and for the families, but it's, it's usually not a community event. But it was a community event this year. And, um, it, it just, it just strikes me of how, it, it's one of those years I'm just never gonna forget and not in a bad way. I, I, I really will look back at this last year really fondly. And, um, although it'll be nice to sort of get back to normal, I'm gonna miss some of the stuff. And I do think that, uh, some of the things that you saw develop out of this are gonna be things that just hang with this organization forever. You know, it's, it's become part of our culture. And, you know, tho- these types of things sometimes bring about, uh, you know, change that, uh, you know, more rapidly than you, than you'd see if you, if you tried to deliberately go through a process of creating a good change, environment. So huge thank you, uh, to everybody here. Um, huge thank you to Tim. You know, we had two retired guys on the EOC. We had the mayor and we had Greg Davies. I mean, Greg, you're like the, I, I call you, I don't want to use the term old, but we call you the, the, the wide ol- old sage. Cause you know, here Greg is somebody that had a career of this with Carver County and had brought his skillset to the table. But probably even more importantly, was able to give his perspective of, what's a resident gonna think about what we're doing? You know, and to even have that perspective was so critical, I thought, during this whole process. So it was just, it was a team effort from top to bottom, like Tim said, and it, it was just, uh, it was just fantastic.
I, I'll just add that, um, having the opportunity to be part of the EOC, um, I, I agree with Matt. I, I don't know that you could be any prouder. Cause it didn't matter who you were or what your title was, your voice was just as important as the next person. And everybody's voice was heard. And I, I thought that that was the most important thing out of this whole thing. It truly was a team effort. Like, like I, I will echo Matt that, that, um, Tim took the lead to say that he's the guy that's in charge. Um, and some days the hardest thing was managing this group and trying to keep them on task. That, that can be as challenging as anything, but somebody had to be that person and that, that was, that was, uh, uh, Tim was able to do that. And, but, um, like I said, I, I don't, I mean, everybody brought something to the table. And that to me was unbelievable because you don't always get that in an organization. I mean, and, and Matt, Matt talked about it a little bit, there were other communities that go, well, look at what Chaska's doing. Why aren't we doing that? Why, why aren't we stepping up and doing things like that? And it was, and I got to be part of some of those events. Uh, I got to go out on birthday patrols. That was, that, I thought that was pretty cool. Then did the graduation, um, parade and I thought, wow, this was something. Marshall and I will never forget the word celebration, will we, Matt? We must've heard that. We heard that song once, we heard it eight hundred times that night. But, uh, um, and then to be part of the, the Santa parade, I, I tell you what, I, it's something you, you can't ever describe, to see the reactions of people and how that was received by the community is, uh, we talked about it. We don't know how that could stop if we're go away from pandemic. I, 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 I just don't know how, I don't know. Maybe it'll never be perceived like it was that first time through, but it, it was amazing. I, I got to be part of the food drives. I, I got to help deliver food, uh, deliver masks. Just being part of all those things to see the reaction that we get from residents and, and some of them, uh, I mean, some of them looking at you say, why are you giving me this food? You know, it, it's just, I don't know, some pretty amazing things that came out of that. But also some pretty amazing things that we were able, uh, problems. We were certainly problem solvers. We could, we could put something out and somebody go, that's crazy. And then we'll talk about the next week and the next thing you know, something comes out of it. It, it's, we always talk about, oh, let's throw it up on the wall, we'll see what sticks and we'll talk about it next week, but we're not gonna make a decision this week. And, um, a lot of times it made a lot of sense after we thought about it for a while. So, very fortunate and I'll, I'll echo the same is, um, thank you to everyone involved. And generally when you have an EOC, it's an event. There's an end to it. I mean, generally you know, when you hit a point, you hit an end. When in, in this particular thing, with it being a pandemic, we don't know when that end is. And it's so different and it's, and like, like, like was already stated, it's, this was more of a, uh, um, started off as information, then it turned over to be more HR than anything. And it really wasn't, didn't, police and fire were involved, but generally in a, in a, an event where the EOC is there that really the main focus. And this one, that, thank goodness, it really wasn't that. It was completely different type of a situation. So it was very unique and still is very unique and, um, learned a lot. So, very interesting.
Uh, well, I'll just quickly just say, I mean, you guys have shared a lot of the comments. I mean, you guys, you, you've all done an amazing job. Continuity of services. There was a lot of unknown in the beginning. A lot of people were scared. Um, making sure that everything kind of stayed and that, and people didn't have to worry about emergency personnel or water or sewer. And then going above and beyond with the charity, with Chaska cares, even the innovation of Parks and Rec, you know, pivoting Mother's Day. I took advantage of the Mother's Day, you know, I hope that comes back, um, you know? And video game, uh, you know, recreation, you know, things to keep people safe at home. And the keeping you connected meetings every single week, I get to hear updates about what's going on. It's all amazing. Every single one of you keeping the, uh, coffee with the cop, even on Zoom, Julie. You know, everything that you guys have all done, um, all the hard work put in, it's amazing. So, uh, I could go all day long, but, um, it's just wonderful to see. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo the same. I think it was definitely a time where some organizations said, we're gonna step back. We have to step back. And in true Chaska form, Chaska was like, we're gonna step forward, let's do more. We're gonna do it differently. We're gonna do it safely, but we're gonna do more. And, um, I thought that was really meaningful. And when Chaska Care started, I was like, this is some fluffy thing. They're gonna do parades, they're gonna, but it really turned into so much more than that with the food distribution and the masks and vaccines. And I think that's just really, again, true Chaska form, that it was, you know, had a fun side, but had a serious side and got things done. And, um, this, you know, all the staff that made all happen is incredible. Time where some of us were sitting in our homes really scared to be innovative, to think outside the box. Um, in challenging times is not easy and everyone did a phenomenal job. So, um, yeah. I will forever, you know, it's going from remembering a pandemic in a negative way to remembering, uh, parades past your house every couple of months and things like that. So I think it was, been amazing. And, um, I was in Georgetown, Texas this last week and it's a, they had signs that said Georgetown, Texas cares. And I swear they just copied that from us. My best friend said that that's probably not true, but I just know.
I know Lakefield stole ours.
It was not the same logo, but caring is so infectious. And I think that, um, I'll be convinced anytime I see something city cares that, uh, they're just copying what was made here. So, thank you to everyone.
And just wanted to echo the comments earlier. Um, and also add that, you know, when it comes to, you know, great teams, you know, like you look at the Chaska Hawks Girls basketball team that was here before. When it comes down to the, those clutch moments or even those periods where things are really tough, great teams of people come together, they step up and they rise to the occasion. This team here, our community, their leaders, people in, within the city of Chaska stepped up big time, right? For the people that the, the passion, the dedication, um, that thoughtfulness, that real sincere, genuine, um, really that's really caring in a real thoughtful way all came through. And it's important to, to not just do that in times of crisis, but to carry this forward. And I think the best thing that we can do from this is to carry forward all of the positive things we gained from this and to bring those forward, even when we come out of the pandemic. Because those are the things that make this really a special community. And thank you guys for all of that. Thank you for everything you've done. And, you know, let's, uh, celebrate that and continue to do that because that's what makes us special here.
Thank you.
All right, my turn. Um, I'll, I'll just keep it short, which is rare for me. Uh, just thank you, those online, uh, on Zoom. Thank you everyone who participates and, and evolve. It has just been appreciative of all the support and, and trust and, um, you know, things, lot went wrong with the pandemic, but we got a lot of stuff right. And, and I think continuity services and, and the Chaska cares initiatives have been some of that cares around. And I'd again, thank everyone on this call listening and just appreciate all the city employees who given their time, changed their life and, and then took care of their families as well. Cause you got, you know, a lot of, a lot of things got different focus. So appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Thanks again to the EOC team that's up there. So, we'll see you Wednesday at the EOC meeting.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Like you say, you said you only made an agenda, but you had way more than that. So you maybe followed the agenda, but a lot of, a lot of input went into that. So. Thank you. Now you guys can go nighty night. See y'all. Thank you. Or you're more than welcome to stay. There's more exciting things to do here.
This year.
Look at them go. Look at them go. Like rats off a sinking ship. All right, um, Kevin, do we have anybody else visitor presentation?
Let's go and let everyone leave first.
All right. So we have nobody else on visitor presentation. We will move to item seven approving previous meeting minutes. Uh, again, if there are no corrections or additions, that entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Councilmember Hubbard. Second by Councilmember Hatfield. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries, moves us on to consent. Again, items that are, uh, needing approval, but not necessarily a conversation, but any may be brought out and have a discussion.
I was gonna comment before Marshall takes off, zipping his coat up. Uh, I think eight F, the installation of the cricket pitch, I mean, that part is super noteworthy and cool. Uh, you talk about a community that comes together and, and promotes diversity and inclusion. That is a very prime example. We're at a very little cost and some creative thinking. And I read a great article about it in the, in the Herald. It's just something of note. And it, and it talks about just the uniqueness of finding solutions and, and, you know, we, we fall in the trap of thinking. And, you know, we fall in the trap of thinking baseball fields, soccer fields and football fields, right? But there's, there's other needs for other, for other recreation activities. I just thought that was really great to see in there, so thank you.
Partnership there a little bit?
Yeah, well, actually, if Marshall's here, why don't you just?
You can leave your coat on, Marshall.
I don't really want to talk.
Left your coat on.
Sorry, Marshall, you're not going home tonight.
So close.
Come on, let's go.
Yeah, so. Chaska has a local cricket club and they reached out, I think it was about two, three months ago, you know, making, making. You know, the mayor and staff and us aware of that and wondering if we could just have some conversation because. They were having to travel about thirty to forty-five minutes, you know, just to access a field somewhere in the, in the metro area and so. Got together with them, learned, learned a little bit more about them and their passion and their, and their desires to. Not only want to play as a club team, but also to really grow the sport and provide opportunities for youth. In the community to be able to, to play cricket and so. We took a look at where that, where we can make it happen, you know, and tried to figure out. You know, where would be the least amount of impact and that's where staff landed on McKnight Park where we could. Install the pitch in between a, a couple of soccer fields in the out of bounds area. You know, and working with Brian Jung and Public Works, they're able to self perform. A lot of the work to get some of the, the base done. And, you know, and then the Chaska Cricket Club has some skin in the game too with funding the turf that's going to get. Overlaid on top of the concrete there and I know they've already created a GoFundMe site promoting this. It's my understanding they've already gotten the funds for that, so I think that just demonstrates there's a lot of support and excitement. For the, the sport of cricket to come to Chaska, so I think it's going to be exciting.
That was what I wanted to touch on because I, I was a little worried that this was really moving fast and. Do they really have the resources to raise the funds and I, I talked to Matt about it today and, and Matt said. They already raised it. I said, well, why didn't you put that in the report? It would really, he goes, because I just did it over the weekend that they raised it, so. That, I guess that really does tell you because I was a little concerned because I did get the first call and I kind of said. You know, Marshall, I talked about it and he said, well, I'll call him and talk to him about it and I didn't really know that much about it and I certainly didn't know what. A cricket pitch was and, and then, you know, and then all of a sudden here we are. I mean, like I said, it was only a few months ago. And here we are already creating it, so it's, and, and they've raised the funds to do the carpet, so that. I mean, that's always a great partnership when we get, when they, both, both sides got a little skin in the game. It, it just makes for a whole better system moving forward, so. Kudos to that group that they were able to, it's apparently way stronger than my original thoughts were when, when I first heard about it, so. And that's what I really wanted is to share that, that, that they, they've already come forward and already raised the funds, so it's pretty cool. Still be interested to watch one, but we'll see what happens.
So they, well, and I know the cricket club would really like, you know, city staff and I think we could include council in on this. Some sort of like inaugural first match out on McKnight Park when that cricket is pitches in there, so.
I don't know if anybody saw the videotape, but they taped Marshall hitting the ball. And if you didn't know, Marshall played college baseball and it showed. I mean, that was a pretty nice hit.
Still working on that, but yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but you know, one thing that I shared with the park board last week too is. A lot of people don't know, but cricket is the internationally, the second most spectated sport next to soccer.
I read that and that surprised me as well.
Yep.
Hey, that.
Sort of like soccer here in the U S, we're kind of just slow to adopt some of these. Kind of like what John had said, you know, and so I think it's just. Great to be kind of on the, the, the cutting edge of the growth opportunity there and support another group in our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else under? I, I just got one there, Kevin or Liz, I don't know who I, I'm just regarding and I, I, I don't really want to go into great in depth on this and. Maybe partially we could have some offline, but the, the zoning ordinance about, about fences for pools and that. You, you can't have a chain link fence anymore. It just seems odd because there are a lot of things that you can do with. Chain link fences versus wood and plastic, but. Matt, when I kind of said something to Matt about it, he thought, is it, because you can climb a chain link fence, is that?
Actually, as I, as I looked at more, I think there's two separate parts of the ordinance that are being dealt with here and.
Part of it, like you can't be front yard or something?
Yes, that the chain link can't be front yard, chain link can be.
Side and rear.
Side and rear. So there's, so there was two different things and I had to read it and I never got a chance to call you afterwards, but. It's really two separate things. It's really sort of defining that the decorative has to be in the front. Yard and that the chain can be in the side and in the backyard, so.
So it's just that you can't have it in the front?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, because I just, as a former chain link fence owner, there's a lot of things you can do with it and they certainly look a lot nicer than. Some of the wood and plastic. That's why I just thought it was odd, but it, you know, you're saying that. Most communities have adopted that.
Or just to have our ordinance more reflect what's happening in other communities now.
All right, well, that's, I just voiced my opinion, but as usual, it goes nowhere, so we're okay. All right, anyone else under consent? If not, an entertaining motion to approve. A motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second, to approve consent. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. All right, we move on to action item, adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two, approving concept plan for. Cantissimo, Cantissimo of Chaska.
I'm here, Councilmember, this is an item that's coming to you from the planning commission. It's actually on a site that we previously looked at for a much larger. Taller building, basically directly across the street from the Target, a park. And on the north side of the Pioneer Point Development. As you can see, there's thirty-two units of assisted living and memory care there being proposed here. This is a concept plan, so it's really looking at sort of those high level. Issues that will need to be dealt with during the planning process and Liz is here to go through that application.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, members of the council and Mr. Mayor. I'm going to do a quick screen share here. As Matt mentioned, we're looking at a concept plan request tonight for the project dubbed as Cantissimo of Chaska. Which is a memory care and assisted living facility. So the site that Matt was referencing is highlighted in blue here, so it's a triangular parcel just north of. The Pioneer Point Development, south of Hazelton Golf Course. You have Chaska Commons, just kitty corner, and then you have Super Target and Wings Financial just on the west side here. So just a bit of a background, so it was back in two thousand when Pioneer Point was approved and this parcel was kind of a remnant parcel. Of that development and then as Matt mentioned, we did look at this site previously. About two years ago in March for a previous concept plan known as Hazelview Senior Co-op. And that was approved back then for a thirty-seven unit, four-story senior apartment building essentially, or condo building. So we're looking at a completely different concept plan and use being proposed tonight, but still kind of relevant in some of these discussions. The developer did conduct a neighborhood meeting on March tenth of this year. To allow the neighborhood, neighbors to come and hear about the, the project and hear some initial concerns related to it, so. A couple of those concerns brought up out of that meeting were in regards to tree preservation. Pedestrian connections, drainage, emergency vehicle traffic, proximity to the Pioneer Point Development. And then overall property values. This is just an analysis of the site from their perspective, just highlighting some bigger picture items in terms of views, connections. Site access and so forth. We need to refer back. But getting down to kind of the details of this exact site, it's approximately three acres in size. It's triangular in shape, which does pose some challenges just in terms of site options and layout options for this site. Meaning that more of the western side is kind of your developable area. It is a vacant parcel, but there are a large scattering of trees on it, which makes it a little bit more unique compared to other. Properties surrounding it, so one of the things that is kind of a big highlight in terms of. Fitting a site on, onto this parcel. There are two existing trails that run along the perimeter. There's one along the Hunter Mark side. And then there's also one on the Pioneer Trail side, so they'll be looking at kind of providing a better realignment. On this northern side, but each of these will remain intact with the project. So what they're specifically requesting tonight is a concept plan approval. Specifically for the construction of a new memory care and assisted living facility. Which totals thirty-two units within it and then a total of thirty-eight residents. And then getting back to kind of the, the tree aspect of this parcels, again, it's kind of a big ticket item here with this property. We did do an analysis back in two thousand nineteen when the initial concept plan came in or the previous concept plan. Came in for a different use and that still holds true relative to this request tonight and. Wanted to showcase the exhibit that we provided during that analysis in terms of some priority areas to look at and those are highlighted in red here. And the applicant has used that kind of towards their concept plan layout. So this is the proposed layout for Cantissimo of Chaska. In terms of access into the site, they're proposing one access off of Hunter Mark Road, kind of on their southwestern side of the. Parcel. And again, this is meant to try to line up with Target to the west there and I'll show a better exhibit. Showing that. But their kind of reasoning for positioning and where the parking lot is located is due much in part to kind of where the trees are on the site, so what. The trees that are highlighted in red are the ones that were circled by. Staff in our initial Hazelview analysis, so they use that to kind of. See where some buildable areas are while saving some of these trees. So what you see in red. Without Xs through them are what they're proposing to save as a result of this site layout. So as you can see, the building is more so situated on the west side and that's due a lot in part to. Meeting setbacks and just having buildable space, so the eastern part is pretty much unbuildable. But they are showing their stormwater ponding there as well as some pedestrian connections to. The trail systems here, which will also help with some tree preservation efforts on the east side. And as a result of kind of the overall layout and then, you know, getting a parking lot situated in here and a building situated in here, one of the results of their request is. Asking for a reduction from the Pioneer Trail centerline setback from about twenty-five feet. So they're hoping to get a hundred or a setback of a hundred feet from the centerline to kind of accommodate. The overall layout. And just from our analysis alone, there's a lot of things triggering that just from a setback standpoint. With the Pioneer Point Development to the south there, it does require a twenty-foot setback on that southern edge. You know, there's, there's always a look at, you know, flip flopping the building and the parking to meet the building setback, but one of the ramifications of that is. Added trees would be impacted as a result. Trying to bring the drive aisle around the building, so this is kind of their first take at it. In terms of kind of the most optimal layout. Hazelview, the previous concept plan also had kind of a similar layout too for those very same reasons. To try to save more trees, having the parking lot on the south side with the building oriented towards the street. I think staff's biggest concern is obviously sightlines and ensuring there's, there's safe intersection. Sightlines at Hunter Mark and Pioneer Trail, so they have intentionally angled the building as well. To kind of keep that intersection open, but again, that's one of the requests that they're making.
So, so Liz, if I, if I can pause you there.
Yep.
You said they want to go to a hundred foot setback, what would it, what is it normally? It's supposed to be a hundred and twenty-five?
One twenty-five, yes.
Okay, do we have, is there anything that we have to be concerned about Pioneer being widened in the future? That would create any issues for us?
From a centerline setback, no, you know, Carver County looks at all of these projects coming through and they provide commentary on it. So if they saw a concern with the orientation of the building, they would say so. But that hasn't been the case with this project.
Now is that from the building or the patio?
From the building.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, I just hate to see him if that has to be. Widen, all of a sudden it's right in their backyard. But if the county's good, then all right.
Yep, they're, they're aware of the, the request and haven't noted any concern with it as of yet.
Does it have to go through county for variance as well as for Pioneer Trail? Or is it for like the variance process through like a board of adjustment or is it just for the city?
It's just the city. In terms of kind of the orientation of the parking lot too, we just have an emphasis on making sure that there's adequate screening on this edge. Particularly, particularly around the drive aisle here and on the edge of this parking lot area. Right now they're proposing a six-foot privacy fence to really separate it from Pioneer Point to the south there. We'll just ask that they kind of help soften up this edge a little bit more with their landscape plan that they develop for their preliminary. And then in terms of pedestrian connections, again, they're providing that into the. System that's existing out there. They'll just need to work on providing kind of full circulation on even the southwest side there too. And then getting back to kind of the site access piece, so this is kind of more of a zoomed out perspective, just to give you an understanding of kind of where this offset. Characteristic is happening, so even with them pushing their site access to their southernmost point, it still. Is offset to Target's access on the west side of Hunter Mark. So again, this is a big piece that we're hoping can get fully aligned as that would create the safest movement on Hunter Mark Road. For both those accesses. And one of the ways that that could be achieved is securing a cross access easement on the south side of Pioneer Points. Development to help slide this site access just a little bit more south. And I know the applicant or the developer is working with Pioneer Point and trying to start that conversation. To potentially secure a cross access easement, so that'll be one piece they'll have to work on towards their preliminary.
Yeah, Liz, just on this, on that topic, so in the commentary I talked about in the past, that development association has been. Not, you know, concerned about the traffic, right, you know, in to that, I guess my question is that. I guess my question is, is that is there other solutions to work with that? Because here's, my, my biggest concern is that property, for anything to work on that property, that's going to be the concern that comes up. And are we just, if they just keep saying no, then do things just continue not to kind of work and develop there? Cause I, I do think that is a critical need. And so I just don't know what, I, I don't know what our actions or what could be done, or maybe the answer is if they ultimately keep saying no, then it's gonna impact development opportunities to that property. So I'm just kind of curious on the likelihood and other options, if there were other options to take, if they just keep saying no, because it's not, if it's not this development that goes there, the next development's gonna have that same question, and it keeps coming up.
I mean, are you talking about the aligning of the road?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I, I, I remember that conversation came up with the last development as well, and I know that they met with Pioneer, because Liz, is there one that actually shows the, the property, and maybe I'm getting ahead of it? Because isn't that just a road that's just on the would be the north side of their property, the south side of this? Isn't that just a, a dead end uh, or a loop road, and there's nobody really on it?
Yeah, so it's a, a private road stub that provides access to, I think about three or two or three units driveways on this north side, but it does stub off here. Um, but one of, one of the um, options they're exploring right now is for the site access to kind of curb down and line up with Target. So there's no direct connection with Pioneer Point, which I think is their main concern, is that they don't want any direct traffic impacting their development. And I think that's been kind of their biggest concern, is ensuring that the Pioneer Point development isn't going to be used uh, as an access point to this parcel.
And I think that's, to me, that's one of the things that makes this type of development proposal a positive, because it, you know, it does accomplish a need for something we need in the community, but you know, this parcel could just as easily be just an extension of the Pioneer Point neighborhood going to north with the roads going up there, and, and then obviously you would have that traffic going right through the the neighborhood itself. And so, you know, I think that's sort of been the hope with being able to work with the association to the south is me, this sort of represents sort of the best-case scenario, that you can utilize that property without it having to carry traffic through that neighborhood. But it is a good question, because obviously at the end of the day, it is their decision uh, wh- what they do.
Because it's a private road.
It's private, yeah.
Does that stop at least, yeah? Yeah, I'm just curious. And I, and I, and I know what conversations will have, and everyone has good nature, and I think you sold it very well, that that's a positive to them, because it ultimately um, kind of avoids all that traffic piece too. But again, I, I know we've talked about before, so I was, I was kind of curious.
But, but I do, I agree with you that I think that, you know, if we, I do think there's really some positives for everybody to focus on here. Um, but not everybody sees things the same way, and, and so I do think we are going to have to look at that if the, if that's something they don't want to have going down, and what is acceptable to us.
I mean, hopefully they can, I, that was really one of my big things is that not aligning there. Um, and I kept, I kept looking at that. I kind of drove out there, and I just hopefully they can work something out, because it wouldn't take much to shift it down, and I don't think it would really affect that other uh, other area that much, so.
Can I ask a? I'll just, I'm gonna ask a dumb question. So who owns the property? We're T- Target and Wings Financials. That target, like, so if you, if you couldn't, if it would impact the association, could you move the road across the street north to line it up? Would that be easier because it's impacting, it's not impacting houses, it's impacting?
It moves the high-traffic generator closer to the intersection, which causes a lot more issues.
All right, Kevin, that was a polite way of saying that was a dumb question. I get it.
Now, one, one of the good things with this use too is obviously you don't have a ton of traffic. I mean, obviously you have the employees that will come in during shift change, and families that might, you know, you know, come on the weekends or whatever, but i- you know, it's not like a you know, apartment building where you have people going to work every morning, or, you know, it's, I mean, it's, it's a very different type of traffic uh, generator.
I think the biggest challenge with that is if two people are making opposing left-hand turns, then they basically are, they're, they're basically oncoming traffic to each other. And I've seen that happen in some intersections where they're offset, and you have two opposing lefts, and there's a head-on collision. And so that's the biggest concern I would have.
Yep.
And that's, I could see, totally see that likely. Someone's shopping Target, they're on their way home, they're in a hurry, someone's trying to make a left because they saw their grandpa, they're upset, and then it's like just a bad situation.
Mm-hmm.
Well, hopefully, you know, this is concept, so hopefully you can have that conversation, and you had the same concerns we have, so hopefully we can uh, something could be worked out there. I guess that it wouldn't take much to shift it down, but
Right.
Obviously, it's property though.
Right. Yep, so that'll be something that they'll continue to work on as they proceed toward pr- preliminary. So we'll see kind of what happens out of those conversations. Um, so uh, just to kind of sum up what those major concerns are, we are requesting that they uh, provide an updated traffic study, as they, they already did uh, provide one. Uh, but more so hitting some of these major concern areas, like the access alignment, uh, the turn lanes um, into the site, um, and then looking at the overall impact to the inner intersection of Hunter Mark and Pioneer moving forward. Um, and then these are a couple elevation drawings of the proposed building. Um, so again, it's a thirty-two unit, one-story building. Um, they did provide uh, some uh, articulation in the overall footprint, uh, which helps uh, give some interest to the building and the shape, um, from what you're seeing from, you know, Pioneer and uh, Hunter Mark. Um, and they'll be using kind of a mixture of some typical materials you see in residential communities. Uh, glass, stone, lap and shake siding, so it'll uh, very much read uh, like a, a nice transitional residential piece uh, next to Pioneer Point there. Uh, so they'll just have to continue um, moving forward and meeting our certain ordinances uh, for uh, the type of use that they're proposing. Um, here are a couple renderings and views of the building uh, from a couple different angles, um, it, going into and out of the site, uh, just to give some reference in terms of scale. Uh, so again, just to recap, some of the kind of big-ticket items like tree preservation and landscaping, you know, is there more that can be worked on uh, for the tree preservation side? I would say they've definitely made a good uh, initial um, uh, proposal here on the tree preservation side, uh, meeting kind of what staff has already put forward as priority areas. Um, but also working on some adequate screening, not only on the south side of the site, uh, but around those patio areas that they're proposing uh, for the residents too, so that it's a nice um, uh, balanced area for people to use. Um, and then again, related to traffic, just providing that updated traffic report uh, with those uh, concerning areas. So in conclusion, uh, we are asking you to make a motion tonight to adopt resolution number twenty-two-one dash twenty-two, uh, which would be approving the concept plan for Cantissimo of Chaska, and then based on the conditions uh, that are listed in that resolution. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise I do know the uh, applicant and developer uh, are here in the audience too, if you have specific questions for them.
Questions for Liz or developers?
Well, I'll just say that I thought it was a good use of the area, and um, I was really glad to not have a four-story building there. So I like the one-story.
I think the, the proportions, I agree. Um, the proportions of that are a lot better for that community, because the four-story building, which overshadowed the, you know, the townhouses next to them, so this is, you know, much better. And, you know, the reality is there's not a lot of things you can build on this piece of land that size and shape. I mean, you're kind of pretty constrained with setbacks. So, you know, it's, you know, it's one of those things, relatively speaking, it's a pretty low-traffic type of situation for the most part, because there's not going to be a lot of people. There's no parking except for, effectively visitor or employee parking there, so um, you know, it's, as far as that was as probably as good as you can get for that type of situation. I just, I'm concerned about the traffic alignment and safety issues. Hopefully it'll be worked out. Um, and, you know, certainly, I, you know, you know, whatever screening can be done from a, you know, a, a landscape perspective would probably something I'd be supportive of for the residents who are next door, who were used to seeing a lot of trees, and how the building kind of pushed pretty close to them, with the, or at least the parking lot pushed pretty close to them anyway.
I'll, I'll echo Councilmember Wong towards the screening and impact on the, especially the, the three homes that kind of buffer um, closest to it. But I, I do like, I mean, I wasn't on the council when the, another initial concept plan came across, but I didn't like, you know, look at it and things. This is a nice um, you know, change to, to that, so.
I would also add that I, I like this um, building much better than I was worried that there was too much, too many units in the, in the previous uh, concept plan. Um, I just, I, I, and I look at different things from my previous life, because I, I, I'm looking at more of the the lift assist and the CPR components here that I see in your report that you, and, and I guess this is not, this, this would be to to the applicants about, about um, are they gonna constantly have that assistance there for people to uh, be lifting anyone that's fallen and stuff like that, or is that just in the beginning? And then it kind of slips away as, as time goes on because of funding. And I, I just want to make sure, because that really weighs heavily on, on public safety. And obviously you know that, or you wouldn't have had that in your staff report, so I'm just curious what the applicant has to say about that.
Yeah, Jennifer, do you or Nate want to comment on kind of that piece of the facility?
Can you hear me? Yes. Okay. So yeah, our, the, our policies and procedures for Harbor Health Management is to always have um, enough staff on the floor to have the um, equipment such as the EZ Stand and the Hoyer Lift um, to be present at all times to help in those situations. And with me running Fridley, um, now going on four years, it, it's been a breeze for us. We haven't been able to um, need to call out for emergencies um, for the majority of our situations.
And so is it that, that your staff are not trained in CPR? Is that why you're not doing it?
No, um, you know, when we first opened, um, we were with a former management company, and they did not, um, none of their communities do CPR for liability reasons, and studies show that there's more damage um, that can happen to um, our residents with the brittle bones and everything, to where for liability, we just do not do it, and we carry that on um, through Harbor Health Management. And quite frankly, families understand, and we haven't had any issues.
Oh, that seems, it, it seems different to me. I, you know, uh, CPR started early. If someone's got an opportunity is the, is the best thing, but uh,
Well, with, with our residents, we are um, enhanced assisted living and memory care. Are, there was, the average age of our residents are um, eighty-five, eighty-five, eighty-six years old. Um, and I can say on one hand, I've had in the four years of residents coming in um, without a DNR.
Well, and I understand the DNR and the DNIs, uh, but I, it just, if they didn't would be the part, I guess I just uh, feel a little different on, but um, if that's your policy and the family understands it, then
Yep.
that's what it is, but I uh, but I'm more worried about the lift assists. They have just become uh, such a burden on, on uh, on uh, our public safety and um, facilities like this are certainly needed. I'm not, I'm not saying that, but it's just that they, they start off staff to be able to handle that, and then it just seems like unfortunately, then that staff starts changing and and then, and then the fire department or the police department are then called to do those lift assists and, and uh, I, I, I guess I'm just saying that I hope that you continue to have staff properly, and that, that doesn't uh, factor in that into the, into the future.
Well, we have to be staffed appropriately because of the um, equipment that we have on hand. Um, so with the Hoyer Lift and the EZ Stand. Um, it's always a two-person assist, so we could never go any we, we always have to have at least two people on each floor. Um, and I, I'm talking for Fridley right now of where I'm at, um, along with the nurse. So the other assisted livings um, that are in your area and up in my area too, do not do two-person transfers. So when they have a resident fall, that's when they're having to call out for emergencies. We actually specialize in that, um, and have the proper equipment.
All right. Hi, I'm uh, like I say, I'm asked that question to make sure.
Sure.
Anyone else? Again, I know it's concept, and we'll be able to see this again before anything moves forward, and uh, I think you heard the concerns of the co- the council and staff about the, hopefully trying to work out a way to align that driveway. Um, so that'll be good. All right. There's nothing further and no other questions. I would look for a motion, and what are your thoughts?
So moved.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second uh, by Councilmember uh, Hatfield. And again, that would be adopt resolution twenty-two-one dash twenty-two, approving concept plan for uh, Cantissimo of Chaska. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Luck, we'll see you in the next few months, I suppose. So, thank you. All right, that's our last item there. Bills. Uh, anyone got any question on the bill? Entertained a motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield to pay the bills. Hearing none. Nate, you want to call roll?
Uh, yeah, Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard. Councilmember Wong.
Hi.
Yes. Councilmember Gra.
Yes.
Mayor Winchell.
Yes. Asses five-oh. All right, uh, we move into other business. I will start with Councilmember Wong.
Okay, so I have a few things here. Um, and I exhausted Nate with my questions before the meeting, so he had to take a rest, so. Um, let's see, so um, so the congratulations to the Chaska Hawks girls' basketball team was, was was something that was, you know, very, very impressive. But one of the things I did want to call, they mentioned that the rally after the game, which was actually even just as, if not more oppressive, was that the Hawks girls' basketball team had an average GPA of three-point-seven-eight and won the state championship and beat the number-one seeded school, and had an undefeated season. But to have a three-point-seven-eight through all of that is pretty dang impressive. So that's a huge thing, and I, I'm kind of bummed they didn't mention it, but I just want to call that out too, because you know, because academics are what's going to take them professionally, you know, but that's a huge, huge student thing.
I did not hear that. Thanks for bringing that up. That's, that's pretty, pretty big deal.
So that's what you would call scholar athletes in a big way, right? So, um, but because of that, and here's the thing, that's, I was, you know, talking to Principal Bach, and one of the things that was really impressive was he said, you know what, there's some other students who also did some incredible things, and that same day, um, the Chaska Knowledge Bowl came in third place in the state. So I want to give a big shout-out to them, because, you know, we don't want them to go unrecognized, because that's a huge accomplishment, because they work really hard on that. And also, we had five Chaska High School students who made the All-State Honor Band. So there are Aaron Simeoness, who plays bass clarinet, Savannah Bowen, who plays the clarinet, uh, Key Dwin, now- uh, Key Dwin now, Dwin, who plays the flute, Zachary Curtis in the alto sax, and Sabrina Olson, who in the French horn. So congratulations to all of them for, you know, being in the all-state honor band because that's a huge recognition for those, um, talented young musicians. That's, one thing we passed was last week was, uh, severe weather awareness week. I forgot to mention in the last meeting, but it's something good that we should, you know, living in Minnesota, we're kind of in a tornado area. So, you know, or tornado, high winds, things like that. And so we just had Chief Weeby up here talking about preparedness. Probably a good reminder that we should all probably just do some basics, like, you know, check, make sure we have like adequate, you know, flashlights, emergency radios, you know, adequate, you know, food and things like that or water, um, emergency first aid kits and things like that lined up. It's a good time to check them, check the batteries, your smoke detectors. Just do all that stuff if you haven't already. Um, thank you and congratulations to Larry Harris and his retirement as city attorney. That's, you know, you know, certainly, uh, uh, well-earned retirement. So thank you very much, Larry.
They're dropping like flies over there.
Clients, huh?
You leak, you, Luke, you keep coming back, right? So, um, let's see, um, May second through eighth of next month is Teacher Appreciation Week. And this is probably one of those years that is a very, very good year to take a little bit of time and somehow appreciate those teachers if you have kids in school because it's been a really tough year for them too. So it's, uh, certainly as a parent, you know, I think we can certainly understand that, you know, no teacher wants to be like teaching classes via Zoom when they want, when you want to be in the classroom with your high school, middle school or elementary school kids. Um, looks like the loop, the former part, Chaska Part Thirty is still coming along nicely. So I think construction is starting to roll a little bit again.
Yeah, so they actually use a pretty incredible construction winner. They have actually never stopped throughout most of the summer. So they're going to be in a position, uh, to be done with all the minor grading by mid uh, July so that they can get prepped and then be able to seed it in the fall. And it's our crews that will actually do the, the seeding of it. At the same time, we're starting to, to do some work. I'm looking at, uh, our starter house or a club, uh, facility. So, uh, it won't be too long. We'll be coming back with that. We'd like to have a goal of being able to be in a position to try to start that this fall so that it could open up with, uh, course next, next summer.
Excellent. Very cool. Really exciting. That's really looking forward to that opening. Um, let's see, Southwest Transit, a couple of updates. Um, so this year, actually surprisingly enough, and best funding, which is the motor vehicle sales tax, was a hundred and thirteen percent of what was projected for February, which is kind of crazy. People are buying a lot of cars this past, you know, this past year and even February brought more cars than were expected. So the benefit of that is that, you know, motor vehicle sales tax for people in Carver County, it's actually up. So we're getting the benefit of that. So that's a good thing. Um, they, the, uh, Southwest Transit also launched that four ninety-four to Mall of, four ninety-four service to the Mall of America and the airport last month, uh, which has been, you know, which has actually been pretty favorably received. And, you know, just because it's now, we're actually able to like take Southwest Transit as a prime service to go to the airport, to and from the airport as well as to Mall of America. So if you know of anyone who wants to use that service and try it out, it's a great service that finally we're able to go down that direction. Um, and, and the other interesting to note is that ridership, um, ridership continues to increase a little bit. We're at, you know, the, um, we're at the prime ridership, which is the, the ridership on, oh, is it the on-demand ridership is about sixty percent of pre-pandemic, which is good. But the express ridership, which goes to downtown, is still at about fifteen percent of pre-pandemic. So down eighty-five percent. No surprises there, but you know, it's one of those things where anticipating people start going back. But I think a lot of it depends on businesses opening up and things like that. So that's a interesting sort of conundrum of being, because it's a little bit of a chicken egg, right? You know, people don't want to ride and, you know, but you need the riders. Um, so just, so everyone, you know, has some visibility to that. Um, we're also applying for a couple of, um, EV grants for some of those smaller buses. So hopefully we'll have, if, you know, we, those grants come through, we might be able to order a couple of smaller buses that are EVs and maybe also a couple of coach buses that are EVs too. And again, this goes back to the innovation and some of the things that's nice for us is that, you know, you know, from us, like some of the maintenance operating costs or, you know, in some ways are lower and it's also just plug it in and, you know, charge the thing and, you know, it's, you know, it runs. So that's something where we, we have some grants. So if we get the grants, we'll be looking, I'm procuring at those. But, um, we do have to replace some buses anyway. So if we're not able to get those grants, we'll still replace the buses, just the standard coach buses that we would normally replace. I think almost, I think almost, or ev- everyone in the organization who, you know, wants to get a COVID vaccine has access to it. So, you know, certainly we're encouraging people to, in, in the Southwest Transit to get, um, vaccinations because, you know, there's a lot of people are customer facing. So that's going on. Um, and the city side, um, the one thing that, you know, I guess we can't really ignore in the news is the, the situ-, you know, the, the tragedy was Dante Wright, um, you know, in light of the week of the Chauvin trial, right? And, you know, I mean, this is a terrible tragedy and I'm really, you know, a lot of emotions about being, you know, just very saddened and disappointed and completely frustrated that there's another, you know, police involved death under like terrible circumstances. You know, not even a year after what happened with George Floyd. But you know, compared to what I'm feeling, I know that members of our Black community are, I'm sure, you know, much more traumatized by this because this is something that they have to live every day and they see it every day and it, there's something that is part of their lives. This isn't just a news story to them. And this is, to some degree, it's a reflection of their day-to-day life. And as Minnesotans, as people, as residents of Chaska, we owe it to ourselves to do everything we can to make sure we can avoid repeating these mistakes and re- avoid repeating these things that happen to each of these individuals. You know, so, you know, we, I believe we need to do everything we can to look at, you know, looking at addressing things proactively to prevent these type of situations from happening and challenging ourselves to improve what we do and do everything we can to, you know, support, um, whether it's processes, systems, or training, or whatever it's needed, or outreach, or things to make sure that we're doing what we can to make sure that everyone in our community, every single individual in our community feels safe and welcome here. It's, I believe that, you know, working with all of you over the past couple of years, that everyone here wants this, wants everyone to feel that way. And so, you know, I'm looking forward to continuing to, you know, look at opportunities and, you know, hopefully each of you will see different opportunities that we can tackle together to help ensure that, you know, we make sure that Chaska is the place that we can call the best town, the small town in Minnesota, but not just a subset of people who want to say that, but every single resident can say that because I believe that we can be and I believe that the, the bones are there and we can keep moving forward. And this is a journey that will never end in some ways. So, but it's just continually working to raise the bar and to do that work because I think we owe it to everyone who lives here to help make that the best community it can be. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you.
Um, okay, I first, uh, the bicycle, uh, master plan, the, is that what it's called? Master plan, bicycle master plan?
Yeah, bicycle-friendly community master plan, yeah.
Right. Exactly what the group is called. But the steering committee, um, they had a meeting this last week. Got to meet, um, you know, some of the members of the committee, committee, yeah, my hair. Anyways, got to ma- meet some of the members of the committee, got to meet the, uh, introduction into the design firm, um, and they'll be rolling out, um, a community's, oh, sorry, they'll be rolling out a community survey and a Wiki map, um, for community engagement and feedback. Oh, thank you. Um, the, uh, it's in its, you know, kind of its beta test phase. So us in the committee, committee kind of really interactive that will be recorded. Um, so I'm sure Marshall will send that out or maybe you Matt or Nate, um, once that's ready to launch. And then obviously you guys will send it all out to your, um, you know, group. But I think their, their goal is like a thousand residents to be able to, um, comment on that. So, uh, so that's that. Um, and the website itself just looked really great, um, the landing page. I'm, I'm assuming that will go public soon as well if it hasn't already, but, um, so all the resources are there. Um, it's a great piece. So, uh, so that's that. Um, and then secondly, uh, like Councilmember Wong, I wanted to comment, you know, some of the societal things are happening in Minnesota. Um, maybe not necessarily happening in, you know, they're happening in our state, but maybe not necessarily our local community, but they do affect our local community. So, uh, you know, as a strategic goal for the city, we strive to be a inclusive community. You know, welcoming place for all residents. Hate and racism, they go against this goal. Doesn't have to be national hate cross on someone's lawn. It don't have to be someone referring to another person in a disgusting derogatory term. Racism could be the refusal to seat somebody or be served at a restaurant. Could be a bank teller refusing to cash a check, even with proper ID and a bank account at that bank. Could be a law enforcement official in a very rural community outside of the metro pulling you over and telling you that they know what you look like, they know what car you drive, and their friends are going to be waiting for them if you pass through again. It could be a cashier at a liquor store that loudly shouts that they need to check your ID, make sure you don't have any infractions. It could be an intake nurse at a metro ER that asks if the child's mother knows that you're there and you have permission to bring your child in when they have an emergency, like a coin stuck in their throat. Call boy or buddy when you're a grown man. These are all instances that are personally, um, experienced racism by my husband that I've either witnessed or have known. And like Councilmember Wong says, there are members in our community that are really hurting. Racism is humiliating. It's difficult to accept. It can be scary. And it can be difficult to talk about it. There are very many years that my husband and I never liked to talk about it. It was something that we choked down and would never talk about. It makes you feel hurt. It makes you feel less than. It can make you feel angry and it can make you feel disrespected. So my ask is that we all really stop and we listen to these lived experiences from our community members that are hurting right now. And we ask what we can do to help, to make them feel welcome and accepted because hate has no place in our community. I was, um, I'm a part of a group, a part consortium, and one of the people that runs the group said, um, the word inclusion exists because the word exclusion exists. That's a very interesting statement. Inclusion only exists because exclusion exists. I want Chaska be this place that is so inclusive that we just no even, no longer even need to use the word inclusive because exclusion just doesn't exist. And that's what I'd like to have it be. And that's all I got to say about that.
Thank you. You're all good though?
I am all good.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Hatfield?
Yeah, just a few things. Um, this Thursday is Coffee of the Cop at Dunkin'. Um, that's a good opportunity to, um, go interact with them there. Saturday, April twenty-fourth, this Sunday, Saturday is National Prescription Drug Takeback Day. So, uh, from ten to two, Carver County Sheriff's Office, you can, um, bring any unused prescriptions back. Uh, that drug problem is a huge problem in our country. So go dispose of those correctly. Um, and then there is, um, I believe we have another meeting before this, but just to get it on people's calendars, the Highway Forty-One Construction Project does have a Zoom open house on May sixth from five thirty to seven. And you can go to the Highway Forty-One Project website to sign up for that. Um, I know there's lots of questions from mostly the businesses and the residents downtown, um, along kind of where this will be happening, about where they route in traffic and things like that. So, um, that's a good opportunity to ask some of those questions and kind of see the project. Um, they did present the Downtown Business Alliance, uh, at the last meeting and, um, I thought the presentation was really good just to kind of get an idea of what it currently is and, and, um, steps and all of that. So, um, and the website, just in general, to mention that website is really good, has good information, has good visuals. Um, even if you don't go to the open house, just to check that out. Um, and then just kind of a fun thing is, uh, I started to think, they probably won't see this, but, um, think the group up down every Saturday, um, they call themselves the J and T's Chaska Cleaning, and I don't know their names offhand, but I've, um, seen a few of them just, they go out and Saturday, which, uh, is really, really nice to take their free time on a weekend and do that. So thank you to them. Um, and they always invite other people. So I believe they do it at one and they meet, I think by Coopers, but it's out, they always put it on Facebook. So, um, it's time to go help clean up. I just think that's so sweet of them to do that. So. Um, and then a little bit more serious, I obviously can't follow up Councilmember Wong and Councilmember Hubbard, of course, with, as well. Um, and and honestly, probably I'll be a little bit more direct at the end and didn't practice my words. But, um, just the tragedy with Dante Wright. It's a young life to be lost like that is just horrific. Um, so I think it's just important to say, we have to, the people that go into law enforcement, I genuinely believe don't go into it to, to do bad things or make mistakes, whatever. But to keep holding them accountable to the highest standard, um, whether that's accountability within our police department and having proper staffing so that there are people to hold everyone accountable to make sure training is happening, to go beyond just post-board training, what's required to, to do more. You can always be better. So continuing to do that, to build relationships in the community, that's one thing that I'm grateful. You know, again, we can always be doing better, but, um, I think that a lot of steps have been taken to build relationships in our community so that everyone feels safe, um, as I've gotten older. I would have never imagined, and this is a part of my privilege that I recognize, that people literally didn't feel safe calling nine-one-one. That blows my mind. And as, as we've been able to experience over the last year, that's a very real fear for some people. Um, that they just ca- they can't even call for help and feel safe when they already don't feel safe. Um, so I, this is probably where I'm going to be more direct and hopefully maybe some people will feel like I'm talking right to them. But I was so disheartened when I got on Facebook today to see some of the comments that happened over the weekend. I wanted to scream. I know you're getting emotional now because it was people of color in our community having to defend their lived experiences. And it was so sickening and, you know, comments got turned off and and so maybe that's good, but, but they even had to do that just because people didn't want to just listen. You don't have to give your opinion all the time. Just listen. It's okay to always be better. It's okay to change your mind on something. It's okay to grow. Okay to say I was wrong and now I want to take steps to being right. That's, that's a part of life. And arguing that I saw was just so, like I said, sickening. It was gross that some people had said the things they did and they didn't maybe even seem bad if you just read it. But the fact that there are literal people in our community having to defend their lived experiences and what they go through every day was just gross. And so I just want to encourage everyone to talk to people face to face. I don't think Facebook has ever changed anyone's mind. Um, talk to people face to face, get to know your neighbors, get to hear about what they've gone through, like Councilmember Hubbard shared. Hearing those things are when you get to really understand their experience a little bit better so that you can do better. Um, so I hope we can be, all be better at doing that. And I'm grateful for you for sharing. That's hard. I remember you've shared some of those things before in more private settings, but that's hard to share. It's scary. So I just want to, you know, our community members and I'm grateful the, that people got to use their voice yesterday, um, in this park and on these streets to, to stand up and that they were able to do that. Um, hopefully they felt safe doing that. Um, but as we go forward, it doesn't have to be arguments on Facebook, which doesn't have to be like that. That's all I have.
There we go. Great, uh, Kevin, I'm going to make sure you're still awake, uh, or anyone else who knows this information as well. Two quick things. One, I participated, part of my volunteer, now I've roped into Chaska Baseball Association stuff, helped cleaned up, uh, community park, and just, just a shout, I didn't get his name, I feel really bad, but we had a, a city employee who volunteered, this is volunteer time, to drive the skid loader and the trucks and the equipment and kind of be there to help do that kind of stuff. Do you know, I'm just, do we, Kirby?
Brian Kerber.
From what I saw in the photos, it looks like Kirby.
Okay, Brian Kerber.
But yeah, huge shout out, appreciate that, because I talked to him and thanked him, and then he, you know, he even said, well, you know, technically I'm volunteering, I said, that's even better. I appreciate that even more. Um, and it was just fun to see families come together and clean up the park and pick up sticks, and they had, you know, do some filling in of holes and, um, it gets wet in that space quite a bit with the, with the, um, pond there and everything like that. So just huge shout out, because like I said, that was a, a nice community event to kind of get people together and kind of clean up a park and whatnot, so just a shout out to that. Um, second thing, just looking for, I think I know the answer to this because I literally got a text before I walked in today. So the development in Carlson and Robleen that was ahead, it was a concept up at Founder's Ridge. It appears that that original concept, maybe they abandoned it because it looks like there was a mailing that went out to the community for a community meeting. Is that, is that a safe assumption, is a new?
Yeah, so there was a, uh, a, a new concept that was submitted recently. I think it's going to be on the next count or planning commission meeting and then also thereafter.
Okay.
So it makes sense that, uh, your neighborhood may have received some communication from the developer.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I think that was, that's a good, I will say that's a good first step because I think some of the concerns with the previous one was that that didn't happen kind of before the concept, right? So, uh, maybe, maybe people are listening, that would just get up there, so just.
The last one was just the Carlson, it wasn't Robleen. Now that combined.
That is correct as well, so they've paired them together, yep.
It should have been done, so.
I think it makes it a.
That was a, I, I remember that was a big comment that came out, was just a sort of pre-communication on that, so.
So it hit the mailboxes, I haven't got mine officially yet, but it hit mail, it looks like it hit mailboxes today on the neighborhood. So I might have a group of people with questions as I drive back today.
Same developer?
Uh, no, it's, I'm, and I don't have the name in front of me right now, but I know it's a different developer.
Do you know the name? I have it here.
It's a smaller, uh, custom home builder.
Doesn't matter, I was just curious, same one?
Oh, it's not. Yeah, they said they're a family-owned development building since 1970, family-owned company roots in Scott and Carver County, taking great care, so. So look forward to it. Uh, it's a top Johnson and Reeland, Ryland Builders and Remodelers out of Dundas. Okay, I was just curious. Um, I'm gonna, I, uh, I did, I turned in coming from my development early. So I had the question about the large piece of cement that continues to just be like run into and sit in the middle of the median. Is, has that been feedback?
We talked to, we talked to Brian about that at the two staff meetings ago, and I'm trying to remember what he told us. Oh, that's right, they're reusing that piece. Uh, so there's a, there's something that's on order, uh, right now, and they're reusing that piece, and so that's why they have it sitting there. Um, but it will get repaired and that piece actually goes back in.
Also working with insurance, I think.
Oh, that, that was the other part of it. There's, there's been a, uh, uh, this has to run through our insurance company, which sometimes can cause delays too because they have to approve it before we do it. Um, so, yeah, but, but it is one that's, uh, it's there because it's going to get reused.
Okay, that makes sense. Uh, and then finally, I've, I've kind of sat here and listened and appreciate all the, the words from my fellow council members. You know, and echo that and, and, and council member Hatfield, I was, I'll say too, I, I found myself thinking the same thing this week. Um, you know, there's a term called doom scrolling, right, where you, you scroll through, and it was, it was harsh. It was, I mean, and I, I understand that sometimes those people might not even be living in our community and they're just trolling and, and, and feeding the fire and, but it was really harsh to read those comments and to read that commentary and people being attacked, and then the moderators getting attacked or pulling things down. And, you know, I, I, I can't say anything more than what was already said and very elegantly from my council members. So the thing that I just want to say is, you know, heading into this week as well with the, with the verdict potentially coming, echoing, uh, council member Hatfield, just patience and listening. Um, it's going to be heated, it's, people are going to have strong opinions, and, and just take the time to listen to the other side, to listen to that perspective before you immediately start responding or defending or getting upset and, um, you know, it, it, it's, it's, that's, like I said, that is the, you know, I, I continue to look forward to conversations with friends and family and just, but sometimes it's at that point, you don't have to respond right away, you don't have to type right away. If, you know, call a person up, have a conversation, and really just listen. You know, it's, it's a, it's a very interesting time and, you know, like I said, I just, it was really hard to read those comments because I think every community wants to say like, this doesn't exist here, you know? And we've heard in the news this week, this isn't the Minnesota we know. And I think the reality there is, is that this is the Minnesota. And, and I think we, we do need to do some soul searching there and understanding of how we treat people and, and, and in that thinking, so, um, you know, I, I echo the, the thoughts and the comments of all the council members and really the, you know, like this, the Facebook and social media, just take time to listen and understand and try to get a perspective that maybe you haven't thought about before. And, you know, as I always tell my kids, at the end of the day, be kind, just be kind. That's all I have to say.
The, the comments you're talking about, is it about yesterday's event or was it just general? Oh, okay.
All of that.
I didn't see it, I don't, I'm.
I mean, it would start like.
It was gross.
Oh. It would start with the announcement of a, 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 one rally for one thing and another competing rally for another thing, and, and then it just, just, you know, so it, it was, yeah, it was very disheartening.
I wasn't sure, I haven't.
You're probably better off not reading it. Appreciate it, thank you.
Right. Anything?
Nothing.
Eight?
Uh, just one quick thing. Council member Hatfield mentioned the, the Downtown Business Alliance a little bit ago. They have done some work recently to go through a strategic planning process, uh, with the Fersmans, and they've come up with a strategic plan, so just want to preview next council meeting they are intending to join as a visitor presentation and tell you all about what they came up with. So you can look forward to that. All I've got.
I'm good.
All right. Uh, just a, a few things. May 1st is the city, uh, cleanup day, spring cleanup. Uh, 8 to 2, uh, take everything to Athletic Park. Also, same day, um, looking for time, is a shredding event at the Chaska Rotary, 10 to 1 at Chaska High School East parking lot. You have to pre-register, it's $20 per registrant. How would they find that, I, without me, Matt?
Um, so it's, it's on, if you go to Chaska Rotary Facebook, we're also going to be co-marketing it with our cleanup day too, so that people can sign up that way.
So will we get Chaska Communications, Kevin? Okay, because it's a, you have to go to Everbright to register to, to be, uh, to participate in that, so. That's a good thing, we talked about a shredding event is, is something, and so I'll be curious to see how this goes over and.
Yeah, that, you know, I can tell you that the Rotary Board would really like it to be sort of this annual sort of, just like people view the cleanup day as being something that brings people together, that that's another thing, and tying the two together, you can get some inside and outside cleaning done in the same day.
Right. And normally this same day would be, uh, Christmas in May, now that is September 12th? 18th? September 18th. Um, and that, that, um, May 6th, Highway 41, uh, um, uh, construction update. I, I'm not sure how you get that Zoom link, but is it, do you go to that downtown, high, downtown 41 at Bolton Mink?
Go to the website and you can register for the event.
Because you have to get the, the Zoom link is what I was, so, um, there's, there's a phone number, 612-269-4638, or it says email downtown41@bolton-mink.com. So to register to, uh, get involved with that, so. Uh, council member Hatfield, I never asked, how did the Easter egg handout go? I forgot to bring that up at the last meeting.
Um, it went well, it was so nice to see everyone. Um, a lot of people came through, we had a lot of extra candy, so we got to share some with, uh, some of the senior homes and the police department and things, but, um, that was probably my fault for overestimating, but it was nice.
We were okay with it, we got some too.
Oh, good. It went really well, it really went smoothly, and we, I was worried about traffic, but we were able to keep the traffic out of the road. Um, and it was just so nice to see the kids' faces again. It was, it was sad last year not being able to, there's quite, there's nothing quite like the three minutes it takes, not even three minutes, 30 seconds it takes for all those kids to run into the park and grab eggs, and I miss that, but it was nice to have the drive-through, so it went well. Thank you.
Yeah, I forgot all about that after we left. Uh, I'm just trying to think, um, n- next month we have five Mondays, but the fifth one is Memorial Day, so we'll be meeting the 3rd and the 17th. 31st is Memorial Day actually this year, right? Not the 24th?
Yeah, it is, yeah, you're right.
Okay, and I don't know, has anybody heard, are we having, is there going to be a live Memorial Day event?
Uh, well, I do know for sure they're not having the parade, and they're talking about doing some kind of a smaller ceremony. I don't know if they're planning on doing that yet, something that they record and play or if they're going to actually do it live, but I do know the parade for sure is not happening.
They had a meeting about it, the veterans did.
I, I mean, I figured they're going to do something, you know, they, I mean, the Veterans Day one was very nicely done and I, I just, I just hadn't heard of anything, and I didn't know if anybody else had heard of anything, so at this point. Okay. Um, lastly, I, I don't know what I can add to what the, the rest of the council's already said here. Um, and I'm not, not even on the attempt to, I, I just, um, uh, who knows what's going to happen this week with the verdict, and I just hope that, um, things stay calm and we don't have the repeat of what happened, uh, last summer. Um, I just sincerely hope for that for everyone. I, I just, I, I, it just seems like we're in such a vicious circle, I don't know how to get out of it anymore. I, I just don't know, it's just, it's sad and, and, um, hopefully, I don't know, I don't, I don't know what. Just seems like every time we turn around, something different happens, so. I don't know, I, I, I don't, I don't even know what to say anymore. It's just, uh, it's crazy and it's just not, hopefully something changes, I don't know. John talked about be kind, I, I was, I see, uh, I always think of a saying that I saw somewhere, in a world you can be anything you want to be, anything you can be, is all you got to be is kind. And I hope that that prevails, uh, moving forward, and people think about that a little bit more and, and, uh, that we can get out of this. Everybody attacking everyone, I, like I said, I heard you talk about the Facebook post, that's just bizarre that it's just, I don't know. I don't, I don't, like I said, I wish I, wish there was something I could say that we could stop it, but I don't know. It's just, I don't know. Last call, if not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have one more thing, I like, I was thinking about too, because you talked about construction, not directly connected to the city, but I encourage the city to maybe impress upon it. Jonathan Carver Parkway is under construction, Jonathan Carver Parkway is under construction, and it is an absolutely nightmare to get kids to school and to from school. Uh, I do drop off every morning and, man, it is, it's a mess. And I know, like I said, I, I think the other day they actually have a Carver County Sheriff person out there. The principal has sent out a message about people honking at the, the teachers and volunteers presenting traffic out there. They've had almost a couple, a couple people hit. Um, so I don't know what can be done, the project started, I'm, I'm assuming the timeline of that project had to start before school was out, um, is my assumption. But, you know, if you're listening at home and you're, and you're driving, dropping your kids off, be patient. Understand it's going to take a little slower, maybe get the kids out the door a little faster, that's true for me. And then, you know, if we can, you know, I know the county's well aware of it, the schools talked to it, um, but really any support, because it is a lot of traffic. Both ways and, and then drop off and pickups are a nightmare right now.
They were just doing the ancillary work and then they're going to close it once school's done.
Well, it's, it's down to single lane.
Yeah, and they have the things shifting all over the place, it's, it's a mess.
I haven't driven it lately, but I.
I, I will say that it, what's complicating issues this year too, that I think probably isn't something that was taken into consideration as much, is there's significantly more parents picking up and dropping off kids this year than there has been the past. That, oh my goodness, I, we would, I know he picks up from Lock Academy and Marshall and I happened to be up there when middle school, east, west, and Lock Academy were all coming out at once, and it was incredible, the amount of traffic that was up by the community center there on Engler. Um, so I, I'm sure that's complicating it too, and it's, it's probably not a factor that they've had to really take into consideration as much as, as before. But we can certainly mention it to county, and I know, uh, Brent, uh, Merrick and, and the mayor over there, Courtney had mentioned, it's, it's, it is a mess. I, I know they know it's, it's, it's going to be rough going.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be, I'm one of those parents, my kids took the bus, and this year we made a decision to do drop off because it was one last place to get quarantined on the bus, right? So, you know, you're just like, ah, we're going to deal with it. But yeah, I mean, it just, it's, again, it's the patience and, and being kind and awareness, right? A lot of kids moving around and, and cutting across traffic, and they have signal guards out there trying to help out and keeping the kids safe and, um, you know, it, but all around, you could use some work and we got to, I, how many Mondays, I got, every Monday I tell my kids, I count down how many Mondays of school, so they got to be down to like, so we have five Mondays in, but that's, that's four, so we got like six, seven Mondays left? I think that's about right, because there's like going to June.
They stayed school for the rest of the summer too.
Oh, yeah, because we'll have, we'll have club care there, so, but, uh, yeah, I appreciate anything and, and just.
They've brought a speed limit?
Well, you can't speed.
Yeah.
I mean, you are, it'd be.
You could, but there's going to be cones floating everywhere.
I just didn't know if that was part of it was the speed, because it's fast there.
Yes, but no, you're, you are. I have not stopped and go, it feels like you're in downtown Minneapolis.
That's bad, that's bad.
That's a month ago, and they were, they were just working side stuff, so. All right, uh, anyone else? If not, I would, uh, so I have a motion by council member Wong. Sure who that was. Second by council member Hubbard, to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, we are adjourned, thanks for joining us, have a good night.